Who didn't even know. Secondly.
All right.
We should not give up on that.
No, we shouldn't. It's hopeless.
Yeah. Call the meeting to order for the Leavenworth City Council for March twelfth, please stand for the flag. And you get it started?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four years, that's the first time I've ever started.
Local.
Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand.
Anne Hesburgh.
Zeke Breister.
Jane Ther.
Ronan Baron.
And. Travis.
He's muted.
You gotta unmute yourself to say.
Present.
Present.
Oh, good thought.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to hear from you from Sin City or not.
Listen, at fifty years old, it's not what it's cracked up to be.
I take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. All those in favor, let me see your hand. And it passes unanimously. Comments from public on items not on the agenda, anybody in our public that were. We have three attendees. Anybody want to speak? I'm not seeing any, hearing any, so we'll move on from there to our presentation from Cascade Medical Center. Diane Blake, thank you for coming. Yes, ma'am.
Let me just pop on the next slide.
Oh, it's probably easy if you just do that.
It's easier for me to be here.
Absolutely, that's the way we're doing it.
Yep.
Okay, um, thank you for having me tonight. Uh, my name is Diane Blake. I'm the CEO of Cascade Medical Center. I've been at Cascade for twenty years now and this is my twelfth year as CEO. And as you can see, Cascade's celebrating a big milestone this year with a hundred years of service to the community. So we're very proud of that. The next slide shows our, the layout of our district. So we are a public hospital district. Our official boundaries are about the same as Cascade School District. They cover twelve hundreds square miles from the top of Stevens Pass to the top of Lud Pass to just above Cavanmere. We of course serve folks in our district, those who live outside, visitors who really serve all people. Um, no matter where they live, but the, the standings are important for us from a, to a regulatory standpoint in our public hospital district. Uh, avenues. We're also, um, have two federal designations. So we're a critical access hospital and we're a world health clinic. Those federal designations, um, regulate a little bit the way we operate, but primarily govern the way that we're paid by Medicare and Medicaid. Those designations exist because our country recognizes that it's difficult, more difficult to sustain services in the rural setting. And so, uh, we receive payments differently than our urban counterparts and they're a little bit better. Uh, they attempt to cover the cost to take care of Medicare and Medicaid. They should say, don't fight part of the cost, but come so much closer um, than urban hospitals. So for that, we're very grateful. Um, the next slide has some information about, um, both who we serve, but also what our district looks like. So we know that about thirteen thousand people reside in our hospital district. And then every three years, we conduct something called a community health needs assessment. Uh, this helps us understand demographics and needs of the community. And we know from that, uh, community health needs assessment that about half of the people who live in our hospital district live either below the federal poverty level or are part of the lower, that's that Alex. Figure, I know that pretty much shocked me the first time I saw those figures. And so, uh, that's something we consider when we think about meeting the needs of the community. We also know about twelve percent of our hospital districts has Hispanic or Latino. And we know that the sixty five and older crowd is our fastest growing demographic. And we know that, um, by twenty twenty seven, about thirty percent of our district is projected to be sixty five and over. So again, we think about those, um, characteristics and we think about planning and think about meeting the needs of our residents. So we think about, for instance, living in a large older population and growing population, we think about how do we, um, develop services so that we help people live in their home longer? Um, and how do we break down barriers so that those who maybe lack an expectation, um, can still access care? Um, and on the next slide, there's a, um, diagram which shows how we also think about broadly strategic planning. Uh, at the very bottom level, our foundational level is our culture, uh, which is based on a culture of seven shared values. Uh, those values shape pretty much everything we do on a day-to-day basis as a team. Uh, we believe firmly that by having a strong, supportive, respectful, um, empowering culture for employees that we, um, are a great place to work. And when we're a great place to work, then we are also a great place to receive care. So that those, um, values in our culture are our foundation. Next, we think about, um, sort of four areas and we think about planning for the future. We think about patient and family centered care. We think about financial stewardship, our people and our connection to the community. And it's our belief, there's, there are definitions on that. I know those are new, I'm not going to leave them off. But those, that's how we think about how we serve our community, how we make decisions about planning for the future. And ultimately, we believe that if we are, um, considering those four areas and making decisions based on doing the best we can in those four areas that will achieve our purpose. And that is to care for the health and wellbeing of our community. And for us, that means not just today, but into the future. So the next hundred years for Cascade. And that's how we think about those things. Um, the next slide shows a little bit about, um, our revenue and how we sort of support sustained services. You can see that the majority of our revenue comes from what we do to take care of the community. So that's about eight, seven percent annually of revenue. About two percent of revenue comes from donations and grants. And then eleven percent of our funding is frankly, our community who pays taxes to help sustain services. Um, about half of those taxes come to us for the EMS levy. That's a levy that we historically have asked our community to, uh, renew if they choose every six years. And that levy supports the ambulance services and emergency department services. A quarter of the taxes are for maintenance and operations and the last third are taxes that go to pay that plant that funded the, um, new construction and remodel of our facility about ten to fifteen years ago. The other thing I'll say about sustainability and revenue is that it's pretty tough to be in healthcare these days. Uh, hospitals across the nation have really struggled. Hospitals in Washington have struggled. You know, in twenty twenty-two, as an aggregate, hospitals in our state lost two point seven billion dollars. It's with a B, which is an astounding number. Um, those kind of losses, uh, begin to have us all thinking about what communities are going to lose what services ultimately. Um, the good news for us and our community is that Cascade Medical, that same year, we posted a positive margin, a small positive margin, but, um, still positive. We also grew our cash in twenty twenty-two. Um, and so we remain financially strong. Um, the baseline for a critical access hospital, um, recommend you have between sixty and ninety days cash on hand to sort of get to that point of screen. We're sitting at about a hundred and ninety days cash on hand. Um, and so our financial sustainability is really critical for us uh, because we have a important role in the community in terms of keeping services close to home. We also have, um, a number of pieces of equipment and other things that need to be upgraded on a regular basis. So we keep the latest technology and make sure we've got, um, quality tools for our quality team. Um, the other thing I'll mention is that, um, as a business, healthcare as a business is very people, um, oriented. It's really how we do anything is through our team of people. About sixty-five percent of our costs are, um, related strictly to, uh, salaries and benefits. So we're really cost-driven also on the people side. That's another reason why it's really essential for us to stay financially strong. We want to be able to pay, uh, market wages and, and be able to retain and recruit a really talented staff. They're the ones ultimately who are taking care of all of us. Um, so, uh, we are doing well financially and really focused on, um, keeping that in sight as we think about also serving our community. The next slide lists, um, our services, sort of in a nutshell. I won't, um, run through those, just highlight a couple. So in January of this year, we started, um, a cardiac rehab program that allows, um, folks who've had a heart attack or other significant hearts, um, events to get care locally. So a cardiac rehab program requires a patient, uh, to get, attend essentially thirty-six sessions of care over twelve week period. Um, the outcomes of cardiac rehab are pretty astounding. Someone who completes the course, um, their predictions are either they could increase their lifespan by five years or they decrease their, um, risk of death by about forty-seven percent. So it's significant. And, um, we're really proud to now have that service close to home. I think it makes it much more accessible for people in our district if they, um, have had a heart attack to access that service. We also launched, um, outpatient ultrasound in January. So that's another, another, we're really proud to bring that service also close to home for folks. Um, and then I'll just mention, uh, reminder that for us on the hospital side, particularly our emergency department and our ambulance is a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five business. We have hos- patients in the hospital overnight all the time and uh, we're, we're here always for our community, no matter day or night. And we're really proud of that. We also operate, of course, with the other practice clinic, um, has physicians, physician assistants and a team of people, um, to care for our community that includes, um, a psychologist, a dietitian and social worker. Um, we arrange that team, uh, so that when a patient comes in for their medical need, they also have, um, social service need or behavioral health need that we can hand off care to that patient in the moment. Help get them connected with other services. And so thereby we have an ability to provide what's called whole person care. And it's another way to, um, wrap around services that help care for and with our community members. Also mentioned, we partner with the University of Washington and train third-year medical students, too. So we're also proud of that. Um, the next slide has a picture of our EMS team, um, handing out candy on, um, Halloween. Uh, so we love to be involved with the community. And, uh, the other thing I'll say on here is, uh, EMS services are a lot about partnerships. We of course partner with our community, this funding, we partner with the fire districts to help us care for the community. Um, and so we partner in a number of ways. Uh, we partner with the U-Dub Medical Center on their stroke programs. So we are now level three certified for stroke, uh, bringing that service close to home for people also. And the last thing I'll mention about this is even with the emergency services levy and what we charge for the services for the emergency department and the ambulance, we still lose money on those services. Which means that the other services we have in our house, um, help cover the costs to keep those really time-sensitive services here for our community. And I think for us, we think about, um, how we adapt and grow in the future, how we remain competitive, how we continue to provide services that our community wants, that are convenient. In part because we know if someone else comes into our community that provide something of what we do, that we begin to erode how we, how we cover the hole in part which is the emergency department and ambulance. So we're really focused on sort of whole medical center or health and wellness at the same time. The next slide has a photo from our mobile clinic. Um, this is a program we launched a little bit over a year ago. This is an opt shoot from what we learned for our community health needs assessment. Um, we were able to purchase the mobile clinic thanks to our, um, generous foundation who, uh, provided the funds for that. And we now, um, one day a week, we're either up and playing or we're down in the shasta. Uh, the concept being is that we take our care closer to where people need it. So, um, we try to, try to go out to our community more. So we've got a bilingual provider and support staff in that clinic. We, um, and we're just delighted to be providing that service. Um, next slide has a whole list of other things we do, some of which are, you know, we're, we don't, um, probably talk about as much as we should. There are a lot of ways that we reach out and meet our community. Uh, do want to highlight, uh, healthcare workforce is a challenge, um, not enough of some types of, um, of workers. So we have really been focused on growing our local workforce. So very proud of the partnership programs we have. And then we do also offer, um, community financial support or charity care for every service that we offer, um, to anyone who qualifies. It's based on income. We either offer free care or slightly scaled care. They can have insurance, but we help with the co-pay or deductible or they may be uninsured. Um, it's something that we try to share. So I offer you, if you know somebody you think may be avoiding care because of concerns about paying for it, they, they can reach out to us and we can help figure out what they qualify for. So we're, so it's a really important way that we care for our community, any and all people. Um, and then the last slide just has a little bit of information about economic factors. So we're probably two hundred and twenty people. Um, we're really proud to be part of the economic engine of the area. And we're also really proud to partner with folks on sharing with them, just proud and happy and honored to be here. That's sort of my key item. So happy to answer any questions.
Diane, do you know, uh, for your staff? Like how many are, are commuting out of town? Do you have any idea?
Um, we, we do have that data. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but, uh, probably more than half.
Okay.
Uh, would be.
Yeah, pretty good guess.
Yeah.
And did you guys have any record on, on that, um, mobile clinic? Like how many patients they've seen since they've started or?
We don't have the total. So we got off to a bit of a slow start in November, December twenty twenty-two on a sweet snowstorm day. Um, and it took us a bit to, um, you know, for a while we'd have one or two patients and frankly, more people coming by to say thank you for being here, maybe even needed care. We are now, um, getting sort of the nine to ten visits per day at the mobile clinic, uh, depending on the day.
Yeah.
Uh, so we're pleased about that and we'll, uh, you know, we're open to increasing, uh, locations and days of service when, you know, the demand.
Shows itself.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Diane, it's good to meet you and thanks for sharing with us. I've, I've had medical situations going on for the past several months and I've used everything from the emergency room to the CAT scan, to the DEXA, to the physical therapy, to the doctors. And I think we are so fortunate, I'm sure I speak from, for everyone here, that we have such a facility in this tiny town. I think we're just so lucky. So thank you for being there.
Thank you. Well, it's based to you all. So I mean, you know, it's really community supported something.
I am giving you a lot of business too. And so the other thing is, are we in any danger of losing those two designations? The critical access hospital and the other one was the rural something. I don't know. I didn't write it down. Yeah. Are we in, are we in any danger of losing those designations?
We're not. Um, I think that, uh, the thing that we, the board and management looks at always serves as a risk hanging out there is what if there were major changes made to either of those programs?
Okay.
So it used to be, for example, that, um, we would be paid a hundred and one percent of our allowable costs for a Medicare patient, and now that's down ninety-nine percent.
Okay.
And so the more that that erodes, the less sustainable it is. Um, and if, if they made major changes to the program, then we'd have to, we have to figure that out. And there, I would say on the positive side of that, um, well, hospitals in Washington are collaborative. And I think what we've been concerned was, um, our state Medicaid program was looking to change eight or nine years ago. And there was a big collective effort to educate lawmakers on what would be the impact. And that those voices together helped, um, help, help that change not have to pass. So that's where the risk could be is if there were major changes to those programs.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Travis has a question.
Travis?
Hey Diane, uh, first I, I echo Ronan's sentiments. Yeah, I love Dane and physical therapy and my primary care is there and I get to walk, walk to all of those facilities and it's super great that you guys are here. So, uh, wildfires and large mass catastrophic, um, things happen in small towns. Let's say Paradise. Um, the Paradise fires in Northern California, for example, a lot of small towns and then all at once, smoke inhalation and people are just kind of all hitting the hospital at once. Um, A, are, are you even the real hospital that would be responsible for, you know, taking and triaging some of the, a, a mass amount of people at once? Are you capable of doing that? And do you run drills or, or different things to prepare for that?
Yeah, um, I, we do, the easy one is we do run drills for that and other mass casualty events, uh, whether I think probably the most recent one was a practice drill of a train derailment and having a big influx of patients and how do you triage them? Um, we are colla- we do collaborate with, uh, the other agencies in the area around wildfire. Um, and I think that, uh, yes, we have the disaster, um, preparedness equipment to be able to handle an influx. I, I feel like you're behind me, but I guess you can. Yeah, so, um, but there's probably larger questions because I think the other thing we look at is also evacuation. Um, because it, there, there could be a situation where we actually, no one is safe in the Leavenworth area. We'd have to then manage the evacuation of not only our patients, but community as well. So, um, can we ever be as prepared as we want to be as a, as a society? I'm not sure. Uh, but we do, do work on that preparedness plus you. And we do, um, and we do partner closely with other agencies to prepare and plan for that event.
No, that's great. I, so that's great. And I, I'd assume that you, you had and you do, um, and that's, that's great to hear. Um, last question is, is as far as like backcountry injuries and some, and I understand that maybe it's gonna be lifelighted maybe to the other side of the Cascades, but I look at, you know, the reach that you, you cover up to Stevens Pass. You know, a lot of backcountry and a lot of things happened. There was a somable accident, right, um, several weeks ago. Do they go through, you know, if they're not area backed? Are you i- able, capable of handling emergency backcountry, things like that?
It, it depends on, and so our COO is in the real two. This is really, it's many areas of expertise, this is fairly one. So that may have to school me later on this, but, um, we, it, it really depends on the injury. Um, and so the ambulance runs by a protocol, uh, where some things, uh, no matter what, have to bypass because we're a level five trauma emergency department. Um, and then there are others that come to us sometimes. Uh, there are a number of injuries that we take care of. The vast majority of, of visits and ambulance, um, rise to our facility, we treat and then they're able to be released. Um, there are times when, um, we will essentially stabilize and then send on to a higher level of care for, since like, um, you know, uh, emergency surgery needs or something of that nature. So, so yes, yes, but I guess it's the answer and that there are protocols that, um, that will help identify the right location for each, each patient. Certainly if they come by car, we will take care of them. We can either treat them and release or we may treat them, stabilize and then help transport them to a higher level of care.
That's great. Yeah.
Helicopter out of the chattery.
Yeah, that'd make, that's great. It's a level five. I was just trying to figure out kind of where, where the hospital sits, you know, so. That's great. Appreciate it. Thanks Diane.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Diane, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Diane.
You do and yeah.
Great. All right, we'll move on to our resolutions, ordinances, orders of business. And item seven, the resolution on electronic signatures policy. And Andrea is also, uh, remote today. Just gonna.
Hi, um, so I presented this policy at the February twenty-seventh study session. And I did include or added, um, the mayor pro temp and the finance director to the administration, um, signers. And I also added the minutes for the high, um, risk documents because I realized that I had missed that on the last i- iteration of this. So anyway, um, I just wanted to let you know that. And just to remind you that this will promote um, efficiency in the city, reduce the environmental impacts and conserve public resources. Any questions?
To entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution zero-three dash twenty twenty-four dash the electronic signatures policy and procedures.
Second.
Hey, I heard several seconds. I'll give it to Ronan. Jane moved, Ronan seconded. Any other question? All those in favor, let me see your hands. It passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Shlan Natural Resources Department Interlocal Agreement for some of this critical water facility generators. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor Florrie. Councilmembers, Mayor Florrie, good evening. Uh, this action item before you is associated with an interlocal agreement between Shlan County Natural Resources Department and the city of Leavenworth. Um, a little bit of background on this. So this Shlan County applied for a uh, excuse me, the Hazard Minigation Grant Program funding back in two thousand and twenty-one on our behalf. And at that time, I was coordinating with Shlan County NRD Natural Resources Department about this grant program because we, we've identified a need in our water system for backup generators. Currently, we only have one backup generator and that is at the well field. Um, the issue with that is that we have our service water plant that houses our SCADA system. That's our computer system that is used to basically control our water system. So that is currently at a water plant, which does not have a backup generator. And thirdly, our booster station does not have a backup generator. So I think in zone two would not be served during a long-duration power outage or any power outage, to that matter. So in order to, uh, increase the resiliency and reliability of our water system, we pursued this grant opportunity. And it's taken some time, as stated in the write-off. This was applied for background September first, two thousand and twenty-one. And we just recently, last August, Shlan County was awarded the funds. So, um, what we're, what this grant will fund is a water treatment plant generator, two hundred kilowatts, a booster station generator, backup generator, fifteen kilowatts, and increase the size of the well field generator from a two hundred kilowatt to a five hundred kilowatt generator. Because our current generator is not capable of running all three wells simultaneously. So this increased capacity generator will allow us to run all three wells. Now, mind you, we don't have the capacity in our transmission system to allow all three wells to run at the same time. However, with the, if once we have the icicle road transmission made upsize to a twenty-four inch, we'll have that capability. So we're being proactive by upsizing the generator now, especially with grant opportunity. And, uh, if this interlocal agreement is executed, we would ultimately be receiving, uh, three hundred and six thousand dollars and with a twelve and a half percent match at forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The match is already budgeted in our water fund. And please note that Shlan County will pay approximately sixteen thousand for administering the grant. So we will be reimbursed at the end of the day up to two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions? I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal op- cooperation agreement for FM dash fifty-three ninety-five dash oh-five dash R, city of Leavenworth Critical Facility Generators between the Shlan County Natural Resources Department and the city of Leavenworth.
I apologize, I have one comment. So Tom Graffstra did have a small change to the contract and that was in the fourteen point two insurance. So basically what it does is just strikes the city having to uh, come up with a s- insurance certificate outlining a limit. Just simply states, the city is a member of the Washington State's Insurance Authority Riskful. Such membership satisfies the insurance requirements. I apologize, I meant to state that prior to.
Okay.
My fault.
So there's a little bit of a change.
As amended by Tom.
Yep.
Second.
Diane seconded. Any other questions?
Tom, could you summarize again the cost? We get, it costs how much total and we get reimbursed how much total?
Sure. So the, so the grant is three hundred and fifty thousand. Well, sorry, the project estimate is three hundred and fifty thousand. There's a twelve and a half percent match, which is forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty. So what that leaves behind is three hundred and six thousand dollars of grant, but Shlan County is going to take a chunk of that, about sixteen thousand for administering the, the grant fund. So that's the nice thing about this grant. Yes, they're federal, which means a lot of strings attached and typically they're cumbersome to manage. But however, Shlan County is the delegated authority. So we're just going to be. However, Shlant County is the delegated authority, so we're just going to be working with Shlant County. So soon as we spend the money, we'll get reimbursed by the county right away and the, and the county, Shlant County will deal with the the federal reimbursement side on the backend.
Okay, so it doesn't cost our city anything?
It's a little bit for me because I do still have to treat it as a pass through from a federal grant, but it's not nearly. When he came and told me, I went.
Yeah, it sounds great. Yeah.
It's worth the 16,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds great.
And it comes up in print too.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I want to thank, I probably want to acknowledge Shlant County, they did all the late work on this grant, so it was basically just providing that.
We rolled on their cocktails.
Nice.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passing unanimously.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Mayor, I don't think I got a second on that one. Who is it? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Sorry.
Yep. Council reports shared.
Okay, on February 28th, I attended the Design Review Board. On the 29th, the Osborne Play Equipment Group. And we discussed keeping both of the hand cycles, one's inclusive and the other isn't. They're both in the senior section and we decided to keep both as the cost difference wasn't, was very small. On the 4th, I attended the Upper Valley Historical Society Board slash Leavenworth Museum. And we met and voted to add Bernadine Phillips, who represents the Pascoshia Native Americans to our board. On March 5th, went to the Royal Lady Gala, which was held the Enzian. I'm sure you already heard that Linda Bradshaw is the 2024 Royal Lady. There was quite a fun cake raffle. I would call it the raffle of all raffles with cakes, some cakes going for $300 or more. Now the money to go to the Autumn Wolf Festival Program. And so, but it was a lot of fun to watch. The mayor was interesting. He would always yell us out of price and someone would be.
He just never would drive it up.
Anyway, it was fun to watch. March 6th, the Shalandugus Health District, we had a special board meeting at the facility in East Wenatchee. And as I've said before, Luke Davis, our Shalandugus Health District Administrator has stepped down. And currently our deputy administrator is our active administrator. And this special board was discussed that job descriptions and the wage that will go out for the, for another city administrator, and not a city administrator, another.
Whoa.
Another administrator.
Her voice ears perdu.
Are you awake? Also, that evening, the most fabulous meeting I've been to lately was held at the Fire Hall. And Sean Smith, our commissioner in this end, invited everybody that possibly from the county that could answer any question. The auditor, the fire, you know, the sheriff, it just, there was a product, like what, nine people in front of us? And the room was filled with people from Peshast and from this area. And their questions were fascinating and there was somebody there that could answer every question. And one of them was about a big B and B out icicle that has five bedrooms. And oftentimes has 30 cars parked there and people peek in their house windows. And they were, Diane Walters was there and she could get, gave the, they've hired a company to take care of that. So she passed out that phone number. So just a lot of things happened and when I left, I thought, I know more about Leavenworth today than I have in a long time in this Leavenworth area and all the things that are disturbing to people and trying to get answers and help for those things and help was there. I would love to see that meeting go at least four times a year and have the folks that can answer the questions there. So no, you weren't being referred to a number to call. I mean, they were right there, right on, right on the spot. They knew their jobs well. Their answers were easy to follow. I, I loved that meeting. I just wanted to mention that there's a free community dinner, dinner for all of the United Methodist Church from five to seven next Wednesday. They have a free community dinner, dinner once a month. Also, the city has a table at the Enzian for March 28th for the Chamber Dinner. For people who are interested, they can go to the Chamber Office and purchase tickets. And the Greater Leavenworth Museum is putting on a Women in History, Our Founding Mothers Dessert Theater at the United Methodist Church from two to five PM this Saturday. And that's it. Thanks.
Great. Lance?
Other than Vicky backing off of one of Sharon's comments, the community dinner at the Leavenworth, you know, Leavenworth, Leavenworth Church. Right. Highly recommend going. Other than that, I have nothing else to add. So, Anne?
I have no report this time.
I have no report. Whoa, Shane.
I recently attended a, a meeting with the Friends of Leavenworth Pool last Thursday on March 7th. And you know, there's, there's still, you know, newly formed group and they're trying to get traction and their hope is to bring clear items to the city and the PRSA for that they can, you know, help with. They are, you know, still interested in, in breaking down the N H P visibility study in a more easy to read format and present that to the residents to, to read. Yeah, that's all I have to report.
Great. Rona?
I don't have a report either today.
Okay. Travis?
I always have something to say, don't I? I didn't have any committees, but I did meet with Tom and Curville from RC3. We had a nice coffee together and I learned more about the RC3 and what they've historically been about and what they've got going on. And that's it for me.
Great. Thank you. Just a quick report for me. I did mention earlier at our study session that we did get into the state budget. The budget provided was sponsored by Representative Gainer that would study tourism economies and the impact that that has on housing, both throughout our state, but we're also looking at other high tourism areas. And gather from that report, hopefully some, again, ideas and, and data that can help us move forward. The bad news out of this legislature was we were at the verge of getting our first funding stream through that short-term rental. It made it all the way through all the committees. We had the votes to pass it on the floor. But there are some people who, there's a thing called a filibuster threat that says if you put, bring that out, we won't let it come to a vote. So it went, even though it was popular enough to get passed, that's how politics sometimes run. Some, sometimes power is only in what you can keep from happening versus allowing to happen. So very disappointing because we were, but it's, the, the good news is it's closer than we've ever gotten on this and I just believe that we're still going to get something across the finish line. Next, next session is a full session. It won't have that same kind of rush that it, that you have here that allows for tactics like that to come up, but yeah, we'll get something. I, I'm, I don't quit. So that's, that's the extent of my report.
When is the next session?
Next year. I mean, there's. Yeah, the only meet, this was a short session, so next year's the long one.
Carl, I just want to ask you, a study by WSU, when is it going to be initiated?
What is it? Right away. I mean, they're, they're on it. They'll have a preliminary report before we go into next session, so.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council, hello everybody. Today's staff applied for a $100,000 grant through the RCO to address deferred maintenance at the community pool. If awarded, the funds would pay for replacing two pumps, patching the liner, adding an ADA lift to make the pool more accessible, and installing backstroke flags for the swim team and recreational lap swimmers. This is just a pre-application at this time. We expect to be very competitive. And final applications will be due in June if we advance to the next round. If we are approved to apply for the final round, there will be a resolution in front of you in May. We'll have to include a resolution in our final application. Staff met with Rick Williams Consulting today to review and discuss the parking study update and their recommendations for our paid parking program. The consulting team will be presenting to the Parking Advisory Committee at their April 18th meeting. And they will be taking up the entire study session with the City Council on May 28th. We had our second labor management meeting with the Teamsters Union yesterday, all in preparation for our our negotiations later on this year. The next labor management meeting is scheduled for April 15th. We are hiring for several vacancies right now. In the Public Works Department, we're hiring for our utility maintenance worker and several seasonal parks employees. In Finance, we have a vacant AP PRSA clerk position open. And in Community Development, we are still looking for a building official and we just posted a permanent technician position. I'll be participating in your March 26th City Council meeting remotely from Oregon, where I'll be attending the Northwest Managers Conference at Seaside.
Shantel?
No report.
Whoa.
Feeling nicely. One more week with this baby.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. There is a February 2024 Public Works Report under Tab 9. Feel free to interrupt me if you have questions. I just have a few things. I'm happy to report that we received a Congressional Directed Spending Award from Senator Cantwell's office in the amount of 1.8 million dollars. This award will fund, will fund a partial, will fund a portion of separated combined storm sanitary sewer system that exists in the ski hill drive. That's, we asked, that's about a $5 million project, but this is really good news. We could at least start a portion of the same here. Just an update on the downtown Kieran Place Pipe Sewer Project. Just a reminder, Ninth Street and the alley from Ninth to Tenth Street will be closed Monday through Friday next week from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Emergency management is aware and we will allow ambulance to spill through, but it's going to be closed for everyone else. And this is to accommodate the last sewer piece sewer main that is to be lined. And then the following week, the alley will be closed from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM to accommodate the, the line work. And a couple of the project updates, our Glacier Lot Bid Opening is this Thursday. There'll be council action, hopefully subsequent to that. And our Front Street Restrooms Expansion Project is currently out to bid with a bid opening April 20th. As Councilmember Waters mentioned, we've been working, of course, on the Osborne Playground. Yesterday, we received our final proposal. We just had to get a few i's dotted and t's crossed. Hopefully we'll have an action before the council on the next City Council meeting. And lastly, I got a notification today that D O T advertised their Leavenworth Salt Shed bid package. So hopes there is to partner with D O T to have a salt shed built in town here. So we don't have to go up to Bluewood or Devas, which is halfway up Seavens Pass to get salt. For snowfall operations. That's it.
I have, I have two quick questions. Down about halfway, where it says calculated updated sewer system development charges for Leavenworth Meadows.
Oh yeah, good question. So their housing, their, their unit count increased. It was.
Three hundred.
Units and it went to 368?
Yeah, yes.
So yeah, so because of that, their system development charge increased for sewer.
Okay. And my other question, research historic maintenance records associated with the city sewer collection system? And I wondered what they, you found?
Oh, that was, I maybe, that, that was tied to a, a legal matter that we've been briefed on in the past. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I attended the Shaland County Hazard Mitigation Planning Process, so that's a regional mitigation plan for hazards. The state has identified more hazards, so that document's going to be expanding in size and scope. And we're just had the kickoff meeting this week. So if you have interest in hearing more detailed updates or getting copies of the notes, just let me know. I can pass those along and through. On March 15th is the adoption of the new international building codes by the state. This has generated a lot of discussion and interest. We are expecting a little push of building permits. I wouldn't expect it to be more than 10. So it's not a huge push for us, but it's significant nonetheless. That means people are trying to get their building permits in ahead of the changes in the code and save some time and money from redesigning. I will jump on what Tom had mentioned about the salt shed. They did get kind of a preapproval from the Design Review Board last year before they went out for the funding. And everybody should know that this is going to look like a, a salt shed. Even though it's on the highway, even though it's commercial zoning, it was considered a utility building, public building. And it's not Bavarian. So if it all comes together, which we hope it does, it is just going to look more like a salt shed. So be prepared for questions there if they come up. That's my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that is all the reports. I am going to ask for a motion to recess into a closed session. We won't have legal counsel, but it'll be for 10 minutes under RCW forty key, forty-two, thirty-one, ten, four, being it's related to planning or adopting a strategy for collective bargaining. No action will be taken. Second. Move by Anne, seconded by Zeke. All in favor, let me see your hands. And we will recess into.